To order, uh, let's see. Mr. Collins, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, this evening we'll go ahead and take roll.
Commissioner Southen?
Present.
McEster?
Here.
Van Essen?
Present.
Collins?
Here.
West?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Review of the minutes. Uh, have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes from our April 6th meeting? And if so, are there any additions or corrections?
I will move to approve.
Very good, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do we have your raise of hands?
Do we have? All right, uh, so, we don't have the electronic scoreboard. Those in favor of approval of the minutes, raise your hand for Mitzi. Opposed, just voice nay. Minutes are approved.
And I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
Very good, thank you, uh, sorry, all right. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, there's not.
Very good. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening? All right, then, uh, let's go into the process of, um, the public hearing, uh, for those items on the agenda. Uh, when there's an opportunity for someone in the audience to speak, please state your name and address, and then present your testimony. The order of testimony will be the applicant for the item on the agenda. Then, those who would like to speak in favor may do so. Third, those who are in opposition to the agenda item may speak. And then finally, uh, the applicant or appellant may speak in rebuttal to those in opposition. After all testimony has been given, we will close the public hearing. The members of the commission will discuss the item. Uh, and at that time, there will be no further public testimony, uh, taken, uh, except as, uh, the chair deems appropriate for, in request to, uh, answers to questions that may occur from the commission. Uh, there is an appeal process, if subsequent to the decision of the commission, one would like to make an appeal, and we can explain that to you, uh, if that is something one would like to pursue. All right, uh, if there aren't any questions, let's move to Agenda Item 1-1. Um, Mr. Zeiderbart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Um, if you recall, at the, uh, at the February Planning Commission meeting, we did a consistency determination for, um, a fortune teller or fortune telling establishments. Um, if you remember at that meeting, it was determined that, uh, there was nothing consistent in any of our uses on the chart that, uh, that fortune telling would fall under. So, uh, the commission at that time directed staff to research how their communities handled, uh, these type of establishments, um, in their communities and bring back some recommendations. Um, so after, after conducting much research, which actually I think Mitzi did most of it, so thank you very much on that part, um, it was discovered that many, uh, communities have enacted ordinances regarding, uh, fortune telling establishments and fortune tellers. Um, the, the purpose of these ordinance is twofold. First, um, it protects the integrity of the industry, and secondly, it protects the public health, safety, and welfare, uh, of a community's residents. Um, so we did put together a, um, a draft ordinance in your packet here this evening, and it kind of follows along the lines of the massage ordinance that we adopted, I, I think this last year, um, in requiring that, um, fortune tellers and fortune telling establishments, they need to acquire a couple things. They use permit from the city, uh, before opening an establishment, and, uh, also, this permit, they have to have a permit for being a fortune teller. Uh, that is basically a permit, much like the, uh, massage establishment permits, where there's a background check done on, uh, on the individual's opening the business. And the ordinance has, uh, some criteria in there for the issuance or denial of such permits by the chief of police. So really, realistically, what they're looking for there is if there's any fraud or anything like that in the background of somebody that's going to own or operate a fortune telling establishment, and that would give them the ability to deny a permit in that instance. Um, secondly, uh, one of the bit major points, um, in the ordinance is to regulate the sale, transfer, or change of location of any such establishment. So if it is changing ownership, we, we want to know who the new ownership is. Um, or if they're going to be changing locations, uh, it would go through a process where it comes in front of the Planning Commission again, so you can review the site that it's going to be going into. Um, there is some operating requirements i- in the ordinance for these establishments. And then lastly, um, the last major point is a use permit required, uh, which would help narrow down the allowable locations. So if you, the flip to the back of the ordinance, and I apologize, I should have told Mitzi I wanted to have these in color, because they were, there were some red on the, on the charts, but the very, if you flip to the back of the ordinance, there's a couple charts in the back that talk about allowable uses in the commercial zone, so table 16.20.1. So we're recommending, obviously, these, uh, for a fortune telling establishment to be maybe located in the C4 district. C4 district is our highway service district. Um, a fortune telling establishment would probably serve more than just the community of Ripon, so you'd want it in a location that's closer to the freeway, uh, for the traveling public. So they could be allowed in the C4 district with a use permit. Again, that would come in front of the Planning Commission for ultimate approval. And then secondly, the other location that, uh, we thought might be appropriate would be the light industrial district. There is some light industrial property lo- located along Parallel Avenue. Um, that might serve well, because it is kind of more along the freeway, um, for any such type uses. Um, and it would again be a use permit, so you guys would review, be able to review the location and determine if you thought it was a good fit for the, for the site. Again, looking at public, uh, safety and welfare of the community when, when you're looking at these. Um, I won't go into a whole lot of detail on the ordinance, hopefully you had a chance to review it. Um, like I said, the major points, I kind of went through. Uh, there is some stuff in here, basically, you cannot, um, live in the same residence as, as fortune telling establishments, so it couldn't be ran out of some house or anything like that, which I, commonly, I think you see in, in most other, uh, locations of these. Uh, so that you, that is, uh, not allowable here in the city of Ripon if this is enacted. Um, and again, just, just the requirement for, um, the permits will help kind of flush out any, any bad things in, in someone's background that we would be able to deny a permit for. So we do want, obviously, legitimate operations in town if they are coming forward with it. Um, other than that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and be happy to answer any questions if the commission has any.
Thank you, Ken.
I have a couple questions.
Yes.
Um, I'm assuming there, the fortune tellers don't get licensed? So there's no formal training and licensing, I didn't see anything about needing a license?
There's not. Um, so the massage therapy, when we went through that one, they, it, there's a voluntary licensing at the state for massage. Um, there is nothing like that for fortune telling. So it's up to a, a city to regulate how they see fit to, um, you know, protect the integrity of the, of the, of the establishments and stuff. So that's why we would do a background check. There is, um, there's some listed in here sections of how it could be denied. Again, most it's, it's revolving around fraud and stuff like that.
Yeah, so hence the background check and the fingerprinting and all of that, okay. Um, then I have two other questions.
Can I jump in?
Okay.
To follow a train of thought? You mentioned, uh, and, and you specify in the, the purpose of the ordinance, the first is to protect the integrity of the industry. What does that mean, Kenny?
Um, basically, kind of like the massage industry, you want legitimate massage businesses in town. Um, so, you know, allowing, if, if you're going to allow uses in town and not regulate them, um, bad establishments can give a bad name to good establishments. So you're really trying to protect that, the industry as a whole. Um, I, there's, there, there could be some good fortune telling establishments that want to locate in town, and, and if you have some other ones that you have, because you're not regulating correctly, um, it could give a bad name to all.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll run with that.
Um, the, the other thing, I didn't see, and maybe I just didn't, didn't notice it, and, and part of this is going to be taken care of by where we're going to allow, but nowhere do we have, um, the distance from, uh, schools. So that, that, I, I would like to see us put some regulations as far as how far they have to be away from schools.
Okay.
And then, along that line, um, I noticed that we're limiting it that, um, it shall be unlawful for any individual managing partner, et cetera, to employ any person who is not at least eighteen years of age. Can we restrict, um, the age of people that go into the establishment?
Uh, I don't know if we can restrict the age of people that can go into it.
I mean, I hate to see some, you know, young teenagers get caught up in that and...
I, I can double, I can double check on that, just to be sure with the city attorney.
Okay. I, I'd like us to maybe look at those two things. That's all my questions so far.
Very good, thank you.
All right, is, in any of these areas, are there residential units? Or do we totally exclude them from being established in a residential unit, even if that unit is still within that zone of usage?
Um, so, looking through the, kind of the zones that we have, C4 and, and light industrial, so just looking at what we have currently in city limits, that doesn't mean there's some property that can't get annexed in. Uh, there is some residents in those, in those districts. They are what we consider legal non-conforming. So they, they're legal, because they were there legally to begin with, back in the day. And now they're non-conforming, they don't conform to the zone. So if an applicant comes forward, they would have to convert that unit to a business type. Now, could they keep the house looking the same? Potentially, but there's a lot of differences in a residential unit and a commercial business. Um, in fact, in, in the sense that bathrooms have to be updated, hallways have to be ADA accessible, accessible. So there's a lot of improvements that have to be done to a home to convert it over to a commercial use.
Um, are we able to put an exclusion in this, that it cannot be in a residential unit within that?
Well, at that point, it wouldn't be a residential unit anymore. So, uh, it would be converted over to a business, a commercial business unit. Um, we do have restrictions in the ordinance that talk about you, uh, not being able to live at, and, and work, live at the establishment itself.
Okay.
Um, so, no one can live there as a residential unit and still operate it as a, as a fortune telling establishment. Um, now, the look of it, obviously, if, if somebody is converting a business from a residential unit to a, a commercial establishment, would be something that could come in front of the Planning Commission. You guys would have a, an opportunity to look at it, um, and make your comments on, on appearance of it and, and stuff, the way a building looks, just like you would any other commercial business that comes into town.
And then last question, those non-conforming units, is there significant? Are there still areas that would consider themselves residential, that are residual in our industrial areas? They had more than four or five homes?
No, no. These are, these are kind of one-off homes that, uh, in some of these zones that were kind of out, um, outside city limits in, in the country setting. It might have a, a house on twenty acres, it's eventually going to get, you know, converted over to commercial use. Um, just thinking of Parallel Avenue, I think there's, there's one house or two houses over there. I think there's only one left that, that actually is a resident, um, that lives over there yet. The other ones, uh, the, all the houses are gone. When you come around the corner, when you first out down Parallel Avenue over there, it, that is all residential zoning, to kind of where new shake, uh, shingles are right now. That, that's where the industrial zoning starts.
Cool, thanks, Ken.
Hey, Ken, just curious, um, so when we look at the, uh, item C here, issuance or denial of the permit, the first four items that are listed there are quantifiable, right? I mean, whether the application is complete, or if they've provided false information, et cetera. But you get down to number five, and it talks about the chief of police is not satisfied with the moral character of the applicant. Kind of hard to quantify that, or qualify that even, and is that something that we can really impose or write into legal? I, I assume Tom's looked this over, but I, I just, is that questionable?
Um, we are going to have to vet this out through the city attorney's office. We, we actually spent some time, um, pulling up a lot of other ordinances from other communities, and pulled a lot of this from other communities, and that was in some of them, but we need to, we need to verify some of that.
Not that I have an objection to it, I'm just thinking that somebody else might, and, and it could come back at us, like you guys passed this thing with that, that language. So I'd be a little bit concerned.
Yeah, uh, and that's something that we will vet out with the city attorney as well as, as looking at kind of the, um, distance from schools and, and age of patrons going into.
So, so what, what we're looking at is, we're, we're looking at this, we're giving you some recommendations and ideas, and then it goes to the city attorney, and then from there to the city council, or does it come back to us again?
Um, it would probably go directly from city attorney to city, um, council, unless there's some major changes in here that you guys are, you know, totally want to revamp to some of these areas, unless you guys specifically want it brought back, and we can do that.
Okay, okay.
Question, uh, Ken, how did this first come up again? I kind of forget. Did someone make an inquiry about it?
We did have an inquiry of, of, um, of an establishment wanting to come into town, and, and looking through our charts back in February when we came to the Planning Commission, didn't really figure out where it fit in our chart. So it wasn't, it wasn't listed on our chart as an allowable use or, or anything like that, so that's kind of when we took a step back and said, "We need to define this, and, and how do we do it?" And so that's, looking at other communities, this is, uh, the way most of them handle kind of these type of use.
Historically, do you know if we've ever had one of these in Ripon before?
Not that I'm aware of, um, I don't know, no.
As to the chairman's comment too about the integrity of the industry? So, I, I sort of agree what's in the code section here. So in the very first, uh, section, purpose and intent, it is to protect the health, welfare, and safety of the public at large. So to me, that seems to be the standard, I mean, we're concerned about our citizens.
Right, right.
Um, I have an unusual experience where I did homes for, um, a psychic Sylvia Brown, and before her, Kristi Frain, who actually brought up this issue. They're sought after by police departments across the United States, okay? And apparently, they have some success in assisting them, and they were complaining about how the industry gets a bad rap by everybody that just wants to rip people off. So, um, I, um, have very little experience except for that, right there. But there was people in the industry who get paid by government officials who were saying that, you know, they could use some protection. So, that was my experience.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, later on in the statute, there's something about Business and Professions Code 17-200, so that's what that code is for. To, to govern businesses and their, and the way they deal with the public. So there's actually a Code of Civil Procedure, Civil Code section, that deals with that generally. So I think that's a good cover.
Very good, are there any other questions? And if not, would someone, uh, like to make a motion to?
This is a public hearing, so...
Pardon me?
Public hearing, so if there's anybody here who wants to speak in favor or against it?
Uh, yes.
Is it a public hearing?
Is, yep, okay, thank you. Deborah, uh, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the, uh, modification to our code and development code? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to it? If not, then, public hearing is closed. Are there any further questions of Mr. Zeiderbart, or further discussion amongst commissioners?
If I could, if you're gonna, if you want to make it, there is a motion in the staff report. Um, if you do want several other items looked at, um, you could just kind of specify that as part of the motion. And if you guys would like to bring it back, we can do that. I don't think there's really a, a specific timeframe on this, it's not a, a time-sensitive thing. So we can bring it back if you'd like, at the, at the June meeting, or we can just, once we vet it through the city attorney's office with some of these questions, we could take it directly to council. So whatever, whatever the commission's pleasure.
I, I would just jump in based on the history and the fact that it's not on our front burner, that maybe just take it back and revise it slightly, and then we could look at it again in a month, or two, or three.
Okay, and those revisions that you'd like to see?
So if you haven't, where George brought up the clause about the police chief assessing someone's moral character, that's one of them.
Okay.
And then also the, um, so basically, I, I will make a recommended action that we, um, move at the city council, um, well, we're actually, we're not asking the city council to approve of, we're asking for...
You can just give me directions to, at tonight's meeting, don't take a formal action on it, just have, you know, give staff direction to go look at these other items here and bring it back with those, uh, recommendations, um, and, and obviously have the, the city coun-, I mean, the city attorney's office sample.
Yeah, I, I would like that us to recommend that, they look at distance from schools, and also age limits if possible, if we can do that.
Patrons.
Of patrons.
Okay.
Because you already have it of employees, but also patrons.
And, Britton, just a question for you, um, because you got the legal training. So when I read that, that the, the police officer determines his moral character, I would assume that the, because this industry is, is ripe with fraud, I'm sure. So I would assume he would look back at convictions for offenses and stuff like that, and make his determination based on that?
I, I just think that the language should be more generic. That same health, safety, welfare of the community? I think it could be a more generic clause and do what you're saying.
Well, I think it does specify, he, he does do a background.
You're doing a background check, you're going to find those things, so maybe it's, maybe it's a little bit too broad to say if he doesn't like your moral character, that he's not going to give you the permit.
Okay, is that what you were?
Yes.
So maybe, maybe change the wording on that? And, uh, just have, have our attorneys look at it.
Yeah, I would be satisfied.
I, I think if Tom provides legal cover for that, I'm, I'm comfortable with that language. It, it's, it's, it's very broad, but, uh, I, I guess, if the police chief believes the person is of sound moral character, then that, that'll be a factor in the consideration of the commission, and, and ultimately, the city council.
Yeah, it does, uh, obviously, you, I said, you guys are making a recommendation to obviously the city council, so, whether, if Tom likes it, the city council might even think it's kind of a, too kind of vague and broad, they, they might pull it out too at some point.
Okay.
I mean, it's up, but, we can start there and, and see where the city attorney sits on this, on that.
Sounds good. So, in terms of a motion, there is no motion to be made, is that correct, Kenny?
Correct, you can just give staff direction to, um, vet out these, these...
I think we've done so, is there anything else that you need from us?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so we postpone, uh, action on this motion. Very good, uh, let's move to Agenda Item 1-2.
I'll need to excuse myself because our clients have mine.
All right. Sounds good. Mr. Zeiderbart?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, since, um, Commissioner Collins is stepping out, Commissioner West, you will be voting on this item tonight, so, um, there's actually two items here in one staff report. I kind of rolled them together, because they kind of go hand in hand. Um, so this is a public hearing tonight, um, to consider allowing medical, dental, and optical laboratories in, in certain commercial districts with a use permit, and approving a use permit, um, for a digital dental lab in an existing building located in the C2 community commercial district. Um, so city staff was approached by business looking at, at, uh, it's the old McDonald's site here on, on Wilma Avenue, uh, with an interest in opening a digital dental laboratory at that location. Uh, upon further research of our development code, it was discovered that medical, dental, and optical laboratories are not allowed in any commercial district within the city of Ripon. Um, after discussing and learning more about the new technologies surrounding many of these laboratory facilities, staff embarked on researching how and where other communities allowed such type of uses. These uses have changed quite a bit in the past fifteen to twenty years to what, how the things used to be processed in a lot of these laboratories. Most other communities that's, uh, that staff researched allowed these type of establishments, not only in light industrial districts, but also professional office and most commercial districts. Uh, the nature of these type of businesses, especially with today's technology, has, has changed vastly, um, where they don't use many types of hazardous materials anymore, um, where they were used in the past in processing of such products associated with their industries. Uh, most of these facilities now use computer automated machines to design and produce their final products with little to no waste or byproduct, um, fall in more into what we would consider a professional office type of use and equipment. Staff has reviewed our development code, and is recommending adding, uh, such uses in the community commercial district with a use permit application, and also adding them as an allowable use within our light industrial, uh, districts. By requiring a use permit to locate in, in the community commercial district, this will give staff, and ultimately, the planning commission, a final authority in deciding where in the community commercial district, uh, such uses make sense depending on their particular operation. Um, so that's part one of the re- staff report. Part two, um, is regarding the actual use permit. So as we mentioned above, in the staff report, um, that we did get approached for a medical, or dental, uh, digital dental laboratory at the, uh, at 1113 West Main Street, the old McDonald's location. Since, as you know, McDonald's moved out of that location, many commercial type businesses, mostly restaurants, have tried to operate out of that, uh, location with, uh, pretty minimal success. Um, as the commission is aware, and, and access to that site is very limited, uh, thus making any kind of commercial endeavor at that location difficult. Uh, the digital dental laboratory, um, did approach the city regarding that location because of the proximity of, of two of their existing clients. They do serve a couple of the dentists here in town with their services. The dental laboratory obviously does not need the convenience access to the site that most, um, commercial, uh, businesses would. Uh, this would also provide the city with an opportunity to have a business occupied building that has struggled, uh, with vacancies over the past nine to ten years. Therefore, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the use permit for a di- digital dental laboratory at this location contingent upon the city council finalizing the zoning text amendment, because the zoning text amendment is something, something that the city council has final authority on. You guys are making a recommendation on that this evening. This is a, um, a public hearing, so we did send notifications out. Everybody within a three-hundred-foot radius of the property did get notified of, of the, uh, of the, um, public hearing. Uh, we did get a letter from a, a local business here in town, Skimco Holdings, um, that I did put on, I, I emailed out to everyone earlier today, I did set a copy on, in front of you, on there, so I, hopefully you've had a chance to review that. I'd like to introduce that, a letter into, uh, the record. So, let me go through a couple of these items. Uh, first thing in there, they, they think they, uh, basically, they were, so they were, um, not notified properly on the public hearing. Uh, we did, obviously, this, there's a sheet here of who we, this was all mailed out to, so we did verify that. Um, things do happen in the past, there's been mistakes that have happened here or there, just quite honestly, we are human, so did double check that, they did get a copy of that. Um, and, and then here's the public hearing notice that was sent out with that.
And that was done in a timely fashion, Ken?
Yes. So, uh, there's requirements of when that has to be sent out, uh, time, time-wise. So that was done. Quite honestly, it could have just hit somebody's desk and, and it didn't get to the appropriate hands, I'm not sure. So, did, uh, did, I was able to verify that, um, and it was noticed, notified, noticed properly. Second item I'd like to talk about, it said, "In reviewing the planning packet on the city website, that the site does have, he agrees the site does have problems for access." Um, but obviously, that is a result of poor planning in the past, and could be resolved by working with the adjacent shopping center owner to create access to the property from the north. Um, so connecting through kind of the Dollar General's, um, parking lot there. Yeah, hindsight on some of these sites, you know, this thing was done, I don't know how long ago, they probably, the city probably should have required some of that access, or that reciprocal access easement at that time, it just, it didn't happen back in the nineties when that went in. Um, since then, the city's tried several times, actually, when McDonald's was still there, they tried, they went to the shopping center owner with an open checkbook, trying to, trying to, you know, purchase an easement to get some access to their site. They're not interested, they, they, it doesn't matter, you know, what, what the amount of money is or whatever, they're just not interested in providing that access. So, it's been tried several times, the city did get involved, quite, there's really nothing we can do about it. It, uh, we can't force that accessibility, the time to do that is when development occurs. So when a project's in front of the planning commissioner, city council, that's when you could put conditions on a project, that's when you have your opportunity for those. So that, that is, um, as, as nice as that would be, that's not really a viable option at this point, until you have some, um, landowners that are, are willing to work together on this. And the last item there, it says, "I'm concerned about expanding other uses into..." And the last item there, it says, "I'm concerned about expanding other uses into the C2 community commercial district that are currently not approved for this zone, especially if it is caused by the fact that our development fees are very expensive in the proper zone and prohibitive to build or develop, or so they encroach into the C2, C2 zone as a matter of economics." I think, I think you have to take a long term, a long term, take a look at the long term effects of these actions. And then lastly, does this business generate sales tax? If not, are you removing the possibility of a sales tax generator using the site? Couple items there. C2 covers a broad range. Obviously, C2 is commercial and, and we do want businesses in there that generate sales tax mostly. But we do allow professional office within C2 zones as well, and they don't necessarily produce any sales tax. Just across the street there, at, at the Ace Hardware Center, you have a workout place and, and a bank. So those are both viable uses that, that occupy space there. They don't produce any sales tax for the cities. And so those type of uses, uses are allowed in commercial districts. However, we, that's not the predominant uses that we, we want to see in there. So it's not necessarily out of the ordinary for, for use to be, a, a use in a shopping center or even a standalone use that does not produce sales tax. However, in this case, the, the dental lab does produce sales tax. Their products that they sell to the dentist's office, they have to pay sales tax on, on any of the items they produce. I think they, they might be able to speak a little bit more about their operation if you'd like, but they do produce like crowns and dentures and stuff like that. And, and the dentist's office do pay sales tax on those. So that, that is, will be a, a sales tax generating use. As far as the development fees, the, the city just got done with a, about a six to eight month process of looking at the development fees for the city of Ripon with the goal in mind to reduce fees and get us more competitive with surrounding communities, as far as non-residential fees are concerned. So that process, we went through that process and actually there was about a ten percent reduction in, in commercial fees with the city of Ripon and, and about a nineteen percent reduction in professional office fees. The goal of that whole study that we went through with a consultant was to get Ripon kind of, not necessarily, we're not trying to be the low price leader of this thing or we're not trying to be the highest either. So we ended up landing pretty much right smack dab in the middle of, of our surrounding communities here with Modesto, Manteca, Lathrip, Turlock, Riverbank. We looked at all those communities. And we're pretty much right in the middle with all these communities as far as development fees are concerned. So we did take a look at those. They have been reduced. We're not out of the ordinary as far as, as development of those. And quite honestly, fees aren't always the driving factor. There's a lot of things that are out of our control, such as population. You know, you can, we have fifteen thousand people in Ripon. Commercial sometimes likes to see fifty thousand people. Well, it just, it takes a lot of time to get to that. And I don't think anybody in this community's got an appetite just to start adding people to this town just so we can see a lot more commercial showing up. So we did try to strike that balance. And then the other thing that we did notice during this study was kind of interesting is, is Lathrip is, is on the low side of development fees, like out of all the categories. They're kind of the lowest. And they don't have a lot of commercial development interest in their, coming to their town. Where Turlock and, and even Riverbank were one, one of the higher development fees, higher than Ripon for commercial. And they've had a lot of success in, in attracting commercials. So it's not always just development fees. It, there's, if you look at the development fees, it's just part of the, one piece of the pie. So we did try to get, like I said, we did try to get competitive i- in those and, and we did have that success. We did bring it down. Like I said, a ten percent reduction in, in commercial fees. And so, so that's just kind of speaks to the, of the, the comment in there. So that was the letter that was submitted for you guys to consider. And just so, I, I thought I'd go through and, and kind of step you through some of that and, and give you at least staff's perspective on it. And so I don't have anything else to add this evening. And if you guys have questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, his final point in the letter is the possibility of a, a zoning change for that parcel. Did you look at that?
Yeah, there's a couple of things with that. Zoning, so zoning changes, you got to be very careful on, on spot zoning. You can't take one piece of property in the middle of a bigger zone and, and zone it something different. So there's, there's some likelihood of, of being called out on, on spot zoning if we try to rezone it. And it is about a, probably a ninety to a hundred and twenty day process to rezone something like that. And then the other thing is if, if it is rezoned and say the, the dental lab decides to move on for some reason in the future to maybe a bigger site, hopefully, or something. You know, now you've lost the opportunity for anything commercial in that, in that center. So now, you know, you, you've taken out, you've taken away something versus adding something to it. Like I said, doing it with a use permit gives the planning commission an opportunity to look at each site by site and determine, okay, does it make sense? Maybe in the State Mark Shopping Center or something like that? Maybe not. You know, so that would give you guys the opportunity to look at each project individually and, and determine that with the use permit process that we're, we're trying to introduce.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the planning director? If not, would the applicant like to speak regarding this agenda item? Please give us your name and address.
My name is Claudia Garberia. And I'm the owner of Accor Labs in Manteca right now. And I've been doing this for a little over thirty years. And as Ken was talking about, the research he did, the laboratory, it's, it's basically all computerized. And we don't produce any hazard materials, almost no waste. And pretty much it's green technology, you know, which is pretty much what people is looking for nowadays. The way we produce, no heat, none of that stuff. It's, it's all computerized. And we employ currently about ten to twelve people. It's a family business. In my family, we are six, and then we have few employees. And one of the reasons that I look for this spot, a laboratory doesn't really need to be in a, in a spot like that where you have a lot of traffic. But the reasoning behind it is, it's, first of all, it's Ripon. It's, I just, we just moved from San Francisco to the valley like almost four years ago, trying to look for a better quality life, you know, and nicer people. And then as we moved here, we, we found the ripon. After three years, we found out the ripon is one of the nicest places around. So we started looking into it to try to move, you know, from Manteca. And you guys know that Manteca's having quite a bit of trouble with, with crime and stuff like that. So since it's, it's a family business, I like my family to be in a safe place. And right next to the police department, that's getting safer than that. So, and other than that, we like the location. And we think that we can be something good for the community. And like Ken was saying, we generate money for the city. And I'm assuming that we can do good over here. We don't have, we don't need the traffic customers going into our place. We do work with people everywhere, basically in the United States. Because before, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the type of work that we do. If you go to the dentist and you need a crown, the, before they had to take an impression. But nowadays, it's all digital based. The doctor will just take an image, a video image, and email it to me. And then I, I develop a three D model in a computer and just generate a crown like that. So I can pretty much work with anybody in the world that has one of those devices. Currently, we have doctors in Fairfield, Antioch, and places like that. So we don't physically have to go like before to those places, which is mail the things back to them, a little crown like that. So then simplify the way we, we produce and manufacture the work. So it's pretty neat. And if you guys allowed us to be there, you guys are welcome to go and see the operation. And it's, nobody in the valley is doing it the, the way we're doing it. We, we spent quite a bit of money in, in having the facility and the machines, close to a million dollars so far on, on the stuff that we have. And nobody in the valley is doing it. And it's just a reference for, for you guys. Six, six years ago, there were about eighteen thousand laboratories, like dental laboratories in the United States. Now it's less than three thousand. The reason being is because the technology changed and most of it, most of the people didn't adapt to it, you know. It's before doing things by hand. Now, you guys are familiar with what machines are doing and computers are doing too. So we adapted that probably about seven years ago. I started to see the change about ten years ago. And then since I have a family that I need to support, I got to do my homework right away. And we are one of the guys that, you know, we are doing very good. And we're providing service from Turlock to Lodi locally. And, you know, anywhere, you know, they, they have this type of scanners. I don't know if you guys have any, any question?
Terrific. Thank you. Yes, could you explain just a little bit more about the manufacturing process? So you receive the digital information from the dentist's office. You said you then put it into a three D image. And then what happened? What, what material does it go into a machine? Is there grinding involved or cutting or lasering? What, what happens to?
There's two, two ways of doing it lately, so far, at least for the last few years. You can CNC a material called, it's called zirconium. It's, it's bio comparable with your body. They discovered this material probably twenty years ago when they were doing hip replacement. And then after that, you know, they saw it was good for your body, you know. The body accepted that type of material really well. So they start developing that material into other things. And then they came down to actually create crowns. And so, so far, the way we're processing that is by a CNC machine, you know. So it gets milled. And it comes in a little disc like that. And you can mill probably about twenty crowns out of that. And basically, the other way of doing it, and new materials are coming up with three D printing. Also, there's no waste. Pretty much there's five percent of waste. I mean, nobody wants to waste the material because it's, you know, it's, it's expensive. So we did three D printing. It's also going to be pretty much no waste. You can use the whole thing, basically. And so you create a model, a three D model, you design it, and then you mill it or you print it. You can laser print it or just print it like this, I don't know, what do you call this? Materials like water, like wax or something like that. Or, I mean, I can get more specific into the name, but I don't know if you're going to follow. So I don't know if you answered the question.
Thank you.
I, I have a couple of questions. First of all, do you live in Ripon? Have you moved to Ripon?
We live in Manteca currently. We live up and, you know where the water park used to be in the Agate Community? That's where we live.
Okay.
For now. Until we move the lab here, our plan is eventually try to relocate over here and rip on ourselves.
Okay. And then, so you said you have about ten employees, but it's families. So there's, traffic amount is going to be like maybe five, six cars a day. You're going to have to come in there and park and-
Yeah, the place over there-
It's not a lot of in and out?
Well, we do have three pickup and delivery vans.
Okay.
Because we do take care Tracy, Lodi, and Turlock.
Okay.
So it's, I don't think it's a big operation as far as that.
So they're just like regular vans? They're not big trucks?
No, no, it's just, just-
So in your, you've checked all that out? We're okay with the access in and out and?
Right.
And, and you don't have customers actually come to your office then or?
Okay. Okay. Let's see. I think that was it. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, well, I don't know if any else.
So there's not a lot of UPS or FedEx or some deal deliveries coming in and out constantly?
I would say the normal, once a day delivery, I guess. You know, we order stuff. So, yeah, they go once a day, the UPS guys.
And, and is there any noise created by the process?
No.
No. Smells? Thinking, thinking dog food.
But before, back in the day, when you were doing dentures, there were probably some smells. But now everything is printing or, or three D. So the industry is trying to go away from all of that stuff. So they're doing a good job.
And so if this, if this were, were granted, do you see a, a major remodel of the, the site? What, what would your plans be for?
We would like to-
Interior and exterior?
We would like to make the place appealing, you know, cosmetically. I'm going to try to make it look professional. That's the whole idea behind buying that property for me. I wanted to have a nice place where, you know, eventually we invite doctors from other places, have convention, well, not a convention, but a little meeting where we show off our technology and the things that we do over here in the valley. Because most of the people over here, they, they don't have a place to get educated. I'm talking about the dentist. They don't have access to see this type of thing unless they go to LA or even in San Francisco. Because the few people that are there, I taught them about the technology. And actually, I, I bought and sold the machines to them and touching, and taught them how to do the things over there. So I think it's a good opportunity to show the place and to show the city, you know. Because doctors, they, they got money. They, they spend money and you never know, right? We do have that currently in Manteca. Where we are now, it's not, it's, daytime is nice, just like this, but at nighttime is different. It's not very appealing. You, you guys know there is a lot of homeless problems over there, so.
Will, will you be closing your Manteca facility then?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you have an opportunity to have a conversation with the owner of the shopping center to determine if they might be agreeable to an easement so that you can access, you can have an access to the shopping center?
I actually don't know them. So, I mean, it could be a possibility. It's not something that I need right now. Because, you know, again, I don't have traffic of people going into the place. Pretty much a nice, quiet operation. So the way things are, it's okay. If it can be improved down the line, time will tell, you know. But as it is right now, it's okay with me.
Since you, you, you're, you would be purchasing the site? Is that correct?
Yes. And that's why it's so important to, you know, to know an answer from you guys.
Sure. So I'm just, just a possibility, but making contact with that, with the owner of the shopping center may be something you'd like to consider because if at a future date, as the planning director mentioned, you folks grow and you need a new location, a larger location, I suspect the value of your property could be significantly enhanced if in fact you do have an easement into that shopping center. So that may be communication that might be beneficial to you.
Yeah, definitely. I, I will consider that definitely. I mean-
Because those of us in town have watched, as, as Mr. Zeiderberg mentioned, we've watched that site languish for many years since McDonald, McDonald's closed their operation there. And it is, I mean, it's one of the most prominent corners in town, highly visible, lots of traffic around it. It could be at some, someday, I think, a very successful commercial operation, but it's got significant limitations now. And so-
Oh, I definitely, I was paying attention to, I'm not an expert on, on real estate or anything like that. I just know what I do. But based on what you guys were talking about, definitely a positive.
Sure.
And I've been talking to people over here, the community, going to cafes or pizza places and stuff. Most of the people don't want another restaurant over there, for whatever reason, you know, new here. But every time I mention that, I have an intention. Oh, you're not going to open a restaurant, right? No. That's been the experience so far, even for you, right? So.
Very good. And can you describe again, I didn't quite understand, how are sales tax dollars generated from your facility? Is it, are the sales taxes actually from the dentist's office or is it actually from your facility when the sale takes place to, to a dentist?
Well, we, we do charge the taxes and then they pay out. We pay the city. That's how it works.
Okay.
She's the money lady. I'm, I'm just the, the other guy. I just run the manufacturing, the, the other stuff.
She nodded yes, so I think you got your answer. Yes.
She's, she's paying someone, I guess.
All right, very good. Thank you. Yes.
First of all, I really enjoyed your presentation. It seems like a very interesting industry and a lot of innovation taking place. If you could just spend another minute on the process. So after you get the digital email from a dentist, you said there's a couple of things you can do. One is, I would think, I thought you said mill, actually mill something?
Yes.
So is that like a lathe with a piece of?
Exactly. It's, you know, it's not like the big ones like where you produce a car part or something like that, which is producing crowns, right? So ten years ago, believe it or not, they were huge, you know, like the first computers. Now it's, it's, you know, they're like the size of a single door refrigerator type of thing. They're this wide, this tall. And they do have a, a milling, what do you call it? The spindle, right? And then a disc and then you just place the disc and they have access into the movements. So it turn around like your hand and, and a position the disc that you're milling into the, into the spindle the, the way you are, you want it in order to be milled. So it's very cool stuff.
Is that computer generated or is there an operator?
Yeah. There is three computers, right? One is the computer where we design the crown on a three D model. And then it goes to another computer with, which is a nesting, which is the computer where you place the things in the positions you want it. And that computer tell the strategy of the cutting into the milling machine. Cause that's another computer and then it knows what to do.
Just two more questions. So for example, how, how much residue and how is the residue captured during that milling process?
So the machine, the, the machines are, they're enclosed and they have a suction system. So there is no, you can go any day of the week to my place and it's clean.
Not a bunch of dust and residue around, I'd imagine? Okay.
I, I wanted, I'm trying to live a little longer. I don't want to be breathing anything or my employees or my family. So I don't want any waste or anything like that. I want the cleanest place that I can afford to keep. And the machines also are very expensive. So I'm talking about machines that are over a hundred thousand dollars. And the life of the machine is the cleaning, you know, you get a little dust in there and the computer or whatever and then you lose your hundred thousand. So it has to be a super clean operation. It's, you know, like the Mercedes where they make their cars now, they have white floors and stuff. It's, it's similar. It's going in the same direction. So.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very passionate about it, you know, so I try to keep the best things that we can. So.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of agenda item one dash two? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this agenda item? Very good. Seeing none, we will close the public portion of this and bring it back to the commission. Any other questions or items that commissioners would like to discuss about this?
I, I would just like to say that I'm, I'm excited about seeing it come to Ripon. Being a commercial building owner of a couple of commercial buildings in Manteca. I feel your pain as we constantly clean up after the homeless. So and, and I'd like to see that building be occupied and made to look like a professional office and, and have that corner looking good, so.
I would just comment, I think we should be really cautious about giving out use permits, but this seems to be an ideal purpose for a use permit. I agree with what Deborah said. It's been such an eyesore for ten years or whatever. And I, I think that's just a great sounding project. I like it.
I would say in a lot of ways, I, I feel the same, but in other ways, it's kind of disappointing that we don't have some great commercial thing that wants to come in there and, and really.
This is a great commercial.
Well, I, you know, more of a, more of a, a retails, from a retail standpoint, that are going to draw people into downtown. This isn't going to necessarily draw anybody else to, to our downtown to take advantage of other businesses that are located downtown. And as the applicant has said, it's going to be their, their family and several employees. So there's a disappointment there, but there's also an excitement that we're going to have something there too, you know? And a viable business that again provides sales tax revenues to the city. And if they spruce the place up and it looks a lot nicer, it will be a really good thing. But there's still a part of me that says, you know, I wish it was something that we're attracting people to, to come to downtown to do other things in our downtown area. Just my two cents worth.
Yeah, my reaction is exactly like Georgia's. It's such a highly visible location in our town. If, if I could pick a business that could be highly successful and very attractive, it would be some kind of a retail operation. But you play the card you're dealt and that has not happened for several years. So I say that with also acknowledging that I think this is a terrific business. I'm very grateful that you folks are interested in the city of Ripon. And, and so, yeah, I look forward to seeing the kinds of improvements that you would make to that building. It is, again, because it's so visible, I hope it's something that's really attractive. And, and as you said, something that will be very appealing to your customers, but also appealing to the people who live and work and, and shop in our community. Are there any other comments? I have a question for.
Gigi was going to say something.
Yes, Gigi.
I think it'll fit in well, because I mean, right across the street, we do have a dentist's office and then we also have that building going on right next to it. So I do think it'll fit in well, but I do feel the same as you guys. I wish there would have been whatever Kohl's, Target, whatever, you know, to draw people to that area. Yeah, I know, yeah, I know, I know. But whatever, yeah. I, I do feel the same as you guys. But I do like the fact that it is something with medical and right across the street is.
Two dentist offices.
Yeah, two dentist's office, that's right. Cause the other one's getting built now, right?
It's done. I think he's in there. Is it? Dr. Crumb's in there, yeah.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, so I really like that aspect of it. I think you guys fit right in in that area.
Very good. I have a, I guess a procedural question. Since Commissioner Collins recused himself, does Commissioner West participate in this? Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? If not, would someone like to present a motion?
I'll be happy to make the motion and I will recommend that the, that the board approved the motion as spelled out in my notes here.
So we do have a recommended action written in that? Yeah, there you go.
The planning commission recommends that the city council approves the recommended amendments to the following ordinances. Chapter sixteen point twenty dash Office and Commercial District Use Table and Chapter sixteen point two four dash Industrial Districts Use Table, all based on the findings of the staff report. Number two, that the planning commission approves the digital dental laboratory use permit, UP one seven dash O two, contingent on the city council approving the zoning text amendment, T A Z one seven dash O two, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Very good. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
We have the motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, put your thumb down and say nay. The motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ken.
It just really quickly, just to, so what was approved, obviously this evening is you guys recommended to the city council. So their approval is contingent upon the city council making the changes to our zoning code. So they would be allowed in there, which will be at the June city council meeting.
Very good. Thank you. All right, let's see. Any additional staff report?
Couple items. Next month, we do have an item that will, you guys will be reviewing. It's a boat dealership that's interested in coming to town. We've been, staff's been working for, I think, several years with these folks. A boat, boat dealership. So staff's been working with this, this particular owner for several years, trying to get them into Ripon. They've, they've been shopping kind of around for some different sites. Looking, really got down, narrowed down to between Manteca and Ripon. And because of the, the study we did with our development fees and got more competitive with Manteca, they did choose to come to Ripon instead of Manteca, just because they, they did like the community better. But, you know, we were, we were quite a bit higher in our fees to start with, but we, we were able to work with them. So that'll be something that the planning commission will be reviewing at our next meeting. They do intend to locate out by Tractor Supply out there along the freeway location. They're, they're going to take about a two acre parcel out there, which there's fifteen, sixteen acres of vacant land out there right now. So that'll be something for the planning commission. And just a, a quick note on, I did appreciate your guys' comments regarding retail on that corner and such. It's kind of interesting. Retail obviously is, is a changing animal these days. You know, Amazon delivers everything to your doorstep within a day or maybe even the same day. So retail establishments are, the brick and mortar businesses are kind of going by the wayside as far as that. What, what you're really seeing is more service oriented businesses, more restaurants, something that you can't get on Amazon. And, and that's kind of your changing face of retail. So it's getting a little tougher in that sense because your, your shops that would normally open and sell items are trying, suddenly trying to find themselves being competitive with very low prices and, and a lot of selection at, at a touch of a fingerprint here on the, on, on the keyboard. So that's something that's just, we're going to have to, you know, try to work through. It's, it's a reality. Like this, obviously this boat dealership, you, you can't buy that and have Amazon deliver it to your front door, maybe someday. But it's something that people want to go in and touch and feel. So those are types of businesses that you might see. Or, or like the more of the service oriented hotels, restaurants and stuff like that, where people have to kind of frequent and go for those services. So just an interesting point that you guys bring up and, and we've been seeing that over the past few years get, you know, a little harder and harder, so.
There are some boutique type retail establishments now though on Ripon that I think are doing pretty well. And I know I appreciate that they're in town. Now that's further down Main Street or off Main Street. But those kind of establishments, I think, add to the character of the town and give local residents an opportunity to support local businesses. And, and so, so those are the kinds of things, I guess, I was, I was thinking of. You're right, Amazon is changing the nature of the way we shop. It's revolutionizing it. And with drones, it's going to change it even more, so.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. We've had, and there's a lot of boutique shops that have come and gone in our main street down there. And the tough part about those businesses is, yeah, you can get some very unique items that you don't necessarily see on, on like an Amazon that are, you know, there's a mass produced. But those businesses are tough in the sense that the owners are typically there constantly having to run the place because you're not getting rich off of something like that because you're just not selling the quantity. So it is, it's a tough, you know, retail has gotten to be a very tough business for many. And so, yeah, we welcome those opportunities when we see them. We like to see that because that, that's what brings people to your downtown. I don't know if you've been to Magpie, the, the antique, yeah, that's a neat place to go visit. Cause those things are unique, one-off items that you don't, you're not going to find on the internet typically. So those are neat businesses that hopefully we can see grow in the future, but.
Any reports from commissioners? All right. Is there anything I missed this evening? If not?
No, I think he's back there sleeping.
He left, I saw him.
Did he?
He was in the car.
All right.
He snuck out. You know what? Cut his pay in half tonight, Mitzi. Very good. I think we are adjourned.